Good evening. So, she will not be joining us, but we wish her daughter and her well as they go through that process. Okay, first order of business is appearances this evening. So, moment when anyone may address the council on any issue they wish. You have three minutes. General rules are be civil. Detailed rules are up on the back wall. Please introduce yourself and give your address when you begin. We're open for public comments. All right, Ira.
Ira Alman, 4436 Frank Crap Road. I object to the city council changing the procedure for filling a vacancy at the last minute. For over fifteen years, the council used option A for filling vacancies, which has council members explaining why they make their choices. The first time I saw it used was May 3rd, 1999, when the city council picked Susan Blake over Dan Grousne to fill David Clancy's vacant seat, and it's been used ever since. In my nearly eighteen years, no one has publicly objected to the current procedure. Option B is less transparent and should only be adopted after a public hearing, which hasn't happened. I'm concerned that the city council doesn't solicit public comment on the applicants before making a decision. It's as if the city council majority believes the appointed council member represents them and not the public. As you know, my main concern with the city council is its lack of openness. Therefore, I'm concerned that Terri Potmeyer didn't reveal in her materials that as president, she resigned from the school board as a result of the scandal following the firing of superintendent Paula Butterfield in February of 2000. Islanders were angry because the board appeared to act with secrecy, not indicating there was a problem. Then suddenly Butterfield was fired and given what appeared to the public to be $194,000 of hush money. Obviously, we can't go into the details, the real details, in the two minutes that I have, but I'd like you to go into it. When the reporter in Times requested records, Potmeyer, as president of the board without a board vote, had the district sue them, and essentially the district lost in Superior Court and had to pay the costs of the newspapers. Potmeyer resigned the day before state auditor Brian Sontag issued a report on August 11th, 2000, essentially criticizing her for violating the Open Public Meetings Act. Potmeyer and the district disagreed and wrote a long response, which appears in the report, but Sontag nevertheless concluded, quote, "As stated in our finding, we conclude in conjunction with the Attorney General's office that the decision to file should have been made by the entire board in an open public meeting to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act." Now, the school board essentially, the district essentially attacked Sontag, and, you know, the council could come up to its own conclusion as to whether the charge was reasonable. Unfortunately, Sontag doesn't have the legal authority to take it to court, and so you don't really get an answer from a judge, but this is the Attorney General's office and the opinion Attorney General's office and the state auditor. Before you select Potmeyer, if that's going to happen, I think you should at least thoroughly examine what she left out of the materials. Obviously, I think she should have a chance to respond if you actually study the materials, and then you would come up with your own decision as to what it meant. But I'm very interested, as you know, in transparency, and I've criticized the council for violating the Open Public Meetings Act, such as what you did with the Clark Beach issue, and so that's my interest and that would be my input.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Tom Acker, 2427 84th Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington, 98040. I just came up here mostly. I didn't even really want to talk, but I just felt obligated to because of the last, I don't know, I'm losing track, because I'm actually getting tired of this fight, but rest assured, I'm not going away. The Save Our Suburbs initiative and the Coalition of People have taken a lot of time, and they are giving me a lot of energy, a lot of positive energy, because when I first embarked down on this road, it just smelled wrong. It felt wrong, and usually when you have those feelings and you have that kind of a gut reaction, there is something that's wrong. And so, when I get home at night and I start seeing my emails, or I get packages like this dropped off on my doorstep, or DVDs and CDs and links to YouTube, I just roll my eyes and I say, where did we lose ourselves on the journey and the path to making Mercer Island a beautiful place? And overall, it really makes me sad, more than anything else. But once I get over being sad, I get angry, and then I work through whatever those twelve steps are. But at the end of the day, I want to work with the council, and I want the council to really stand up and explain what you believe in, because that's part of the problem. It's not just the transparency, it's nobody knows where people stand, and I want you to take an opinion, I want you to have fortitude, and I want courageous leadership from the people that were elected. So, I really want to invite you to learn more about your community, stand firm against external influences, move forward with the moratorium, and there's one other thing. I just wanted to read, it was one of the comments that came in, in one of our meetings, that the Mercer Island Stakeholders Group, Save Our Suburbs, collected, and it said, "It occurs to me, after the SOS meeting and having worked with city staff, the city may not be set up for success. As a small town, we have much smaller needs, and ideally, only small-town issues. With the city council seemingly pushing increased density and sound transits desires, we find ourselves in the extraordinary position of being up against New York lawyers and horribly outgunned. The issue is further compounded when the council brings in consultants and salesmen that influence city personnel rather than listening to the citizens themselves. In addition to asking the question as to whether or not we have adequate representation on the council, perhaps it is time to ask ourselves if we have an appropriately skilled city staff to support the desires of the community." So, that's all I ask, is just you listen to the citizens and we start taking control of our island back. There's one other statement I want to make, and I know I just hit zero, but apparently, and I haven't verified this, but there is no ultimatum that we have to do what the city perceives or is messaging that we have to do as part of the Growth Management Act. And apparently, there's a 1976 memorandum agreement that it gives us a veto-
Tom, I do have to ask you to wrap.
Okay. Over any changes on I-90 between I-5 and 405. So, if we do have that 1976 memorandum, use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, Tom.
Good evening. Tom Emrick, 6231 Island Crest Way. While the willingness of all eleven candidates is most appreciated, there was clearly one candidate who stood out as having the specific knowledge, skills, abilities, and ability that we need on this island at this point and the council. And the candidate's widely respected in the region, has extensive support within the community for the position, and I would very much urge you to select Steve Marshall to fill the position vacated by Ms. Lynn. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I will close public comments. Thank you. We come to the consent calendar. We have payables and payroll on the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Anything to be polled? No? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We move to regular business. First up is Agenda Bill 5034, City Council Vacancy Candidate Appointment, and welcome to our candidates who are here this evening and on pins and needles, I assume, as to how this is going to go. We appreciate the time you have spent getting to this stage, and I guess the frustration I feel at the moment is that only one of you advances out of this evening with our vote, and ten of you, we have to say, you didn't get it. We will talk a little bit more about this later, but I think there's going to be, from my perspective, a real desire to see those who don't advance, stay involved, get involved, sign up for boards, commissions, and do other things here. So, keep that in mind as we go through this. Okay, in the past, and as Ira pointed out, we've had a process which has involved nominating candidates. Each council member could nominate a single candidate, and then we did a vote to see which candidate got to a majority of council members. It became a bit of a stare-down as we tried to do that. We then did conversations about the candidates. I heard from some council members and shared the sense that there was some awkwardness to that, and decided to cook up an option B, which I have heard from staff, looks okay as a process, and I put it before the council tonight as a suggested alternative to the old method. So, the first question we come to this evening is, which one do you want to use, option A or option B? And so, that's a decision we need to make now before we advance. So, I'm looking for input from you all as to which way you'd like to go. Want to start? I think you've got an opinion.
Sure. Well, until Ira said something, I was going to say option A, because obviously, every time, option A has successfully given us the right candidate, but then it hasn't been right all the time. Bad joke. That was a compliment for you, Dan.
Actually, Susan was the one who selected.
That's what I said. It was a compliment.
I was missing that.
Yeah, I did too. I'm sure that's what I remembered. Yeah. I prefer option A. It's very transparent, easy to understand, one person, one vote, sequential in nature. It also gives the council members the opportunity to talk about the different candidates, and in the process of talking about the different candidates, ostensibly, we're the ones who have done the most research in the community. It gives us an opportunity to introduce the candidates to the community, those who are out in the audience and those who are listening. It's a process that has served us well, like Ira said, since 1999 several times, and it's a process that the community and the council knows well. There are unknowns with option B. Option B, as with every option, will not be perfect. So, you're changing or exchanging one set of known issues, granted awkwardness, with another set of issues or problems with option B. So, my preference is to stay with that which has served us well, the community knows, very transparent, very simple, option A.
Okay. Anyone else? Debbie?
Yeah, I am going to support option B, and I think it's a function, I think, to the benefit of the council and also to the benefit of the candidates, and I hope the community, because in this particular context, as in historic appointments, there's multiple very, very talented and qualified people here, and I think it's awkward, to say the least, to put one name or pull only one name, whereas in this context, you have the ability to put forward two that you feel would be very strong leaders for the community. I do appreciate the comment about transparency, so I would be very comfortable if at some point, either in the beginning or after round one or round two, that council members do provide opinion and perspective as to why they've selected the one or two candidates that they have, but in the end, again, I think that we get greater visibility and, yeah, greater visibility through the second process, process B.
Okay. Benson?
It sounds like maybe council member Bertland was talking about possible option C, and that is, I do think it's important for each council member to basically explain why he or she is voting for a particular candidate. So, that's one thing I don't like about option B, the way it is currently stated, and so I think it isn't going to be important for me to have the opportunity to basically explain why I'm voting for a particular person. I understand option B will help, because we have eleven strong candidates, it is a way to somehow narrow the field a little bit quicker, and so I think option B makes sense in that regard, but I think we need to have an opportunity to explain why we're voting the way we're going to vote.
Okay. So, we have A, and I think both of you are on C then, if I understand that, which is B with opportunity for comments. Dan, you want to weigh in here?
I was prepared to support option B. If Benson and Debbie feel that we need an option C, then I'm fine with that as well. I'm not going to end up with a 2-2-1 deadlock over this, so I will go with Debbie and Benson on a modified option B.
Okay. You guys want to talk about, so we're obviously on modified, when do you want to talk about candidates? You want to leave that after each round, after only the second round? So, help me out here. Mike, you want to talk about candidates too, so you want to weigh in here?
Mr. Mayor, I move that option A is the accepted procedure.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, no fails. So, one of you who's got option C, flush it out just enough so that we know exactly what we're doing.
Okay. I'd like to write a motion that we adopt option B with modification, such that at the conclusion of the first round, council members will provide commentary as to their two top choices going into the second round of voting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So, that's our plan. Now, I'm going to throw one more twist into this, which is, and it hasn't been, I guess it's been discussed a little bit, but not with everyone. So, in this scenario, or even in the other scenario, what I normally would do, or Ally would do, is ask members for their vote verbally. The concern I had in thinking more about that and in talking to people about it was that that sort of prejudices the way the votes go. One person begins with no information, the last person might change their votes based on how much the information they have. We cannot do a secret ballot, but what we can do, and I'd suggest that we do this, is we could each write down what our votes are, and then Noel or I can read them off after the fact. So, everybody votes, not knowing what the others have voted, and then they're all revealed, along with who made the vote. So, it's not a secret who voted or how they voted, it's simply that it makes it an even playing field for everybody to make the vote. I'm just looking for a thumb, I guess thumbs up, thumbs down, let's try and do that.
So, just so I'm clear, Mr. Mayor, you're going to say, okay, Mike voted for-
Yes, I am. And I'm going to say, I'm going to say that about each person. Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down on doing that, rather than, okay, good. So, with that, then, Councilmember Siro, Deputy Mayor Grousne, pass those down, we come to our first round. So, in the first round, you have only one line there, but you get to cast two votes. Your first person is going to get, so you're going to put a number one, and that's going to be a person, and a number two, and that's going to be a person. Number one is going to get two points worth of votes, number two is going to get one point worth of votes, okay? Ally, are you geared up and ready to tally?
Um, yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to read them, you're going to count them, though, and then just relay back to us exactly what the total counts are, so that we can have that written down.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Councilmember Wong casts his number-one vote for Terri Potmeyer, and his second vote for Ralph Jorgensen. Councilmember Bertland casts first vote for Joel Wachs, and second vote for Wendy Wyker. Deputy Mayor Grousne casts his first vote for Terri Potmeyer, and second vote for Carl Silverberg. Okay. Councilmember Siro casts first vote for Steve Marshall, second vote for Bradley Jenison. And I cast my first vote for Wendy Wyker and my second vote for Joel Wachs.
Do you want the results before you speak, or?
Let's hear where we ended up.
Okay. Terri Potmeyer has four, Joel Wachs has three, Wendy Wyker has three, Steve Marshall has two, Bradley Jenison has one, Ralph Jorgensen has one, and Carl Silverberg has one.
Okay, and so what will happen is, Terri, Joel, Wendy, and Steve will advance to the second round, and Bradley, Ralph, and Carl will drop off as we go to the second round. You wanted a chance to speak to your candidates, now is the time. Anyone, I don't have an order for this, so anyone want to start?
Thanks. I mean, first of all, I think, as Bruce articulated two weeks ago, an incredible pool of candidates, and, you know, in the crazy event that this portion of the roof dropped in or something, I feel that there would be a very well-qualified council that could immediately step in. So, the challenge was to come up, in my own mind, with criteria amongst a group of people who have very clear set of talents, very clear set of commitments to the community, and a willingness to step up to, you know, what is not always an easy and conversation-free position. So, with that, what really struck me was looking for the candidates who have shown that level of commitment, who have dug deep into the community, and honestly, in some of the less glamorous aspects of the operations of this community, and can also, at the same time, bring some fresh perspective to it, meaning that they have a fairly, or perhaps young in their political careers and involvement, relative to at least some of us who've been in council, and some have been in council, you know, for a significant period of time. So, with that, that's where I landed with Joel and Wendy, and I would speak first to Joel. Joel's impressed me over the last few years in a number of aspects. First, his decision to move to Mercer Island, and I'd say his decision to move to Mercer Island, from what I understand, is similar to many of us, although he has gone above and beyond in this community without having kids in the school district. He's a resident of Town Center and various other commitments that he has, represents, I think, an interesting and new demographic that I would like to see represented on council. The way he's handled the multilateral negotiations with KCLS has also been impressive over the course of the last year, been deeply involved in both working with multiple constituents as well as the council, as well as with the KCLS board, and that is far from an easy set of stakeholders to balance, and he's done an outstanding job there. Commitment to the farmers' market, commitment to schools, again, tremendous. And I would echo many of those same sentiments with regard to Wendy. So, you know, Wendy is, she's been on the utility board, and she's impressed me there with very thoughtful and considered opinions, you know, very careful in terms of looking for the best for the community, but also respecting the needs of the taxpayers to balance and spend their money wisely. During the course of the E coal system, she was right in there, she was deep in the subject matter, and again, we all know that pipes and utilities are not glamorous, it's not the exciting parts of the city operation. So, again, I have deep respect for these two, also for several other candidates who are out there, and I think I spoke to several of you specifically about hoping to see you up here or perhaps on the school board sooner rather than later. And again, tremendous respect for those who have also put in countless hours over years, and if not decades, for this community as well, but I'm looking for the new energy and perspective that I think Joel and Wendy will bring.
Benson?
Well, again, I want to thank each one of the eleven candidates that stepped forward. I think, you know, again, that shows a lot of bravery, a lot of courage, and I just, again, I want to thank you for taking that step and putting yourself out there. You know, a lot of things I might say, obviously, Terri's my first choice, but a lot of things I would say about her also apply to a number of the other candidates. I think, you know, she's a tireless worker and has committed to ensuring and improving the quality of the island. Again, that applies to a number of folks. She also, however, has a very distinguished record. Obviously, there's maybe some people who would dispute that, but I think that we all are not perfect. Some people may think that people have made mistakes, but again, we're not perfect, and we do what we can, we try our best, and I think she has a long distinguished career in public service and just community volunteer work. I think the thing that, it's that combination of her experience and her commitment to the community and her professionalism, I think, is one of the reasons why I feel that she's a unique person who could step right up here and start working from day one. I also admire her because she has been involved in running a very sizable business operation, Youth and Friends of Youth, and has seen that organization go through some tough times and funding cycles, and has had to make some very difficult fiscal decisions, and she's also been involved in a substantial capital fundraising campaign, which takes a lot of time, energy, and talent. And so, I think with that and the fact that she's, has developed a lot of relationships in the region, I think will help this community and help this council. Now, my second choice was Ralph, and I'm sorry that Ralph didn't garner more support. I think that Ralph, one thing I admired him greatly was the initiative that he took, along with a few other folks, to basically help the campaign to get the school bond levy passed, and I think I certainly encourage him to stay involved in community service, as I know he will. But I'm going to speak to Joel, who was actually my, kind of, you know, there's so many toss-ups, everything was very close, but again, I'm going to speak to Joel, and I think, aside from what Debbie has already mentioned, one thing that has always impressed me about Joel, as I have watched him work in different committees, is that he's very deliberative, he's very thoughtful, and so while there's passion and emotion on issues that come before the council, which is right, and he will also, though, sit back and look at these issues in a thoughtful manner, and I think that would be something that would be, again, something welcome on the city council.
Dan, Mike?
I'm not going to beat any new ground here in terms of Terri. That's, you know, I've had the privilege of knowing Terri for almost my entire time here on Mercer Island, working originally with her in CMIPS, where she and Frank Morrison, year after year, made sure that our schools had the monies they needed to operate and did it in amazingly effective fashion. And then her service on the school board, which I think, you know, I'm well aware of the Paula Butterfield thing, but I'm also well aware of everything that Terri did on the school board to help our school system, and to, she was one of the people who makes our, who played a large role in making our school system the thing that we're so proud of on this island, and- in making our school system the thing that we're so proud of on this island. And I'm not going to judge what happened on Paula Butterfield, but I am going to say that everything Terry did in the school board that was so positive is, is something that I give her great credit for. But it, it never stops with Terry. I mean, Terry's been involved in things as mundane as, as school band uniforms, and, going out there and raising the money to, so our, our high school band has, has decent uniforms to, to play in. Her work on Friends of Youth, as Benson already referred to, I mean, just recently, she volunteered to be co-chair of the Youth and Family Services Practice. How many people do that? And, and, because she's just so committed to this community. And, and so I, you know, I, I recognize that, you know, I, I think that the most difficult thing for me, and this is going to sound strange coming from me since I've been up here for 15 years, is that, you know, an argument can be made that we need new blood, or fresh blood, but I also know that we're, we're in a time in, in the council that, that Terry is, that her experience and, and the credibility she has in this community are, are things that will serve us very well. As to Carl, I've had the privilege of, of knowing Carl for a much shorter time, but I've, I've been very impressed with, during that period, of, of seeing his, his knowledge of government and his understanding of how government operates. And that's, that's, from my standpoint of sitting here on the council, is that's, that's a critical thing. I mean, we have some tremendous other candidates, as Debbie and, and Joel and Benson have already referred to, and any one of them could do well, but, but from my knowledge of, and talking, knowledge of Carl and talking with him, I know that, in, in a completely different way than Terry, he would have hit the ground running here, in terms of understanding governmental processes and, and how to be an effective legislator. So that was my primary desire in, in casting my second vote for, for Carl. As Benson did, I will comment also on the remaining, on two of the remaining candidates, and, or really, on all three of the remaining candidates, just to say that the, you know, I, I think Joel, what Joel has done in this community already is, is fantastic, and, and I have the utmost respect for what he's done in the farmers' market, for the library, for Open Space Conservancy Trust, and, and no question, he's a great candidate. And that was a very difficult choice not to put Joel first or second. Wendy, I, I haven't had the experience of working with Wendy, but I've, I've spent a fair amount of time during this process talking with her, and talking and walking with her, and Wendy got to meet our dog on, for long occasions of, of walking, walking with Jack. And, and I, I'm so impressed with Wendy. I think that she has got a great future in this community, and will do phenomenal things going forward. And then, and then Steve. I, you know, Steve and I have not always been on the same side of issues over the years, but I, I got a chance to spend an hour and a half with Steve and, and Jack again yesterday. And Jack likes Steve also. And, and it was, it was a very fascinating discussion. And, you know, Steve definitely has a, a role to serve in this community, and whether it's on the council, or continuing on the planning commission, or in other capacities, there's no question, he, he is definitely a, an excellent, an excellent individual who really is committed to the, to this community. So by leaving out everybody else that ran, I, I do want to just also make the comment that, you know, having 11 people, and having 11 such qualified people running is, is just so impressive. And, you know, I say that with the only hesitation being we've been down this road before. And as Debbie will well remember, we had a lot, when Debbie threw her, I think you threw your name in for, when, when Jane was selected, and we had lots of good people. And out of that group, the only one who eventually stepped up to run was Debbie. And, and so I, I just ask the rest of you to, to, you know, prove that you want to be on this council and, and run in the next election, or get on the boards and commissions and, and get more involved with the city, because this is an elected office. This is not an appointed office. And the only way this works is if people run for office. It's not, you can't just walk in here and get appointed. Sometimes it's nice, but that's, this is an elected office.
Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to say everything that everybody else has already said. So this has been, we've been introduced to new blood, if you will, and I appreciate that. Carl, Darren, Andrew, it's been rewarding to get to know you and, and your perspective, and I commend you for throwing your hat in. Ralph, I'm sorry I didn't have another vote for you. You are a great asset to the community, and I hope that's recognized. I hope you, you take that to heart for the elections in 2015. A great asset to the community, and I hope this is kick-starts you even further in your public service. So thank you for that. Councilmember Bertland, I have a special place in my heart for those who have grown up on Mercer Island, and who have returned, and who are serving Mercer Island. And for that, Bradley, I, I really am happy to see you interested in public service at the, the town where you grew up in. So, good for, good for you, and I hope you become more interested in public service, being our commissions, or even 2015. I gave Steve Marshall the two votes, my first nod. You know, I didn't spend time preparing a, a matrix of qualifications of public service and connecting this to the Mercer Island, to the community, but I dare say that, that Steve, if not leading in all those categories, would be the top one, the top two. He's completely dedicated to the island, and I'll make note that this is the second time that he's applied for a vacancy on the council, and, and in the interim, has shown his commitment to serve this community by being on the planning commission. Thank you for that, Steve. So what are we doing? You know, we're, we're substituting the electoral process. Electoral process, you know, on Mercer Island, it'll last six months. And during that process, what do our citizens do? I can tell you, they put you through a thorough vetting and a thorough evaluation of what do you stand for, what are your qualifications, et cetera. And I know everyone on this dais has done an equally committed job at that. So I think, when I look at different candidates, Steve Marshall stands out, not to say anything less about anything, but he really does stand out. You know, education, let me back up. When I look at what we do on this dais, is the different, the breadth of different subjects that we cover. What are they? Not all-inclusive, but the environment. We talk about the environment. We talk about transportation. We talk about development on the island, big issue right now. We talk legal issues. We talk education. We talk social services. All fascinating issues, and what really makes it worthwhile to be on this dais. So I, I go down on all those different categories, and I, each time, I go to Steve. Education. Well, that's not really a needed, that's not really a vacuum on the council. I mean, we are 100% behind education on Mercer Island. We recognize the importance of education on, the first school bond, the council supported the first school bond. The second school bond, the council supported the school bond. Field maintenance, we, we, we accept responsibility on, on field maintenance, janitorial, to relieve the school of the expenses of doing that. The council is so pro-school that we're in that legal gray area of being able to support the school anymore. So it's not as if we necessarily need a school advocate, although I know Steve is a school advocate, having raised three daughters on the, on the island. Social. I'm not here to say that Steve doesn't have feelings or expertise in Youth and Family Services, but again, this is an area that the council pretty, almost unanimously, on pretty much every subject that Cindy brings forward to us, support and recognize the importance of a safety net on the island. Where, where is an area that Steve really has special expertise that is very, very important to the island? Transportation. I would like to point out his commitment to the island. Two years ago, he was one of only two citizens, two citizens to go to Olympia and testify on behalf of Mercer Island combating or stopping tolling on I-90. And I'm here to tell you, that had an effect upon those legislators. His eloquence in front of the cameras, in front of those legislators, those legislators know Steve Marshall, and we are now in a position, certainly, I won't say it was solely his, his testifying and subsequent actions that turned the tide, but it was important. And it was a, it was a sacrifice of his time and trouble that he did for the island. And a legal expertise, you know, my goodness sakes, Harvard Law School, 30-year partner for Perkins Coie &amp; Law, and we kind of associate Harvard, you know, that's kind of, that's, I think that's very impressive, and that's a qualification to have on this dais. The environment, very important on the island, sustainability, et cetera. You look at his resume, and what are some things that pop out? Advanced transportation, these are words that pop, pop out. Advanced Transportation Energy Solutions. Beyond Oil. Advisor to State Economic on Energy and Transportation. National Laboratory of EV Projects, Electric Vehicle Projects. Electrification of Transportation. Advisor for New Energy Solutions. Climate Policy. Innovation in Transportation. Plug-in Electric Vehicles. What Role for Washington? And for Christ's sakes, he owns a Tesla! What other great qualification for that? Development and Comp Plan. We know that is a hot issue right now, development and comp plan. The SOS, Grassroots Organization, I commend you all. It's an important issue. It's a grassroots issue. I do believe Steve was the only candidate to attend that meeting. Again, he sacrifices his time and effort. He's connected. He has the ear of the community. Just knowing that to be at that meeting is having the ear. And, and four of us council members recognize that, found, recognized the importance of that meeting, and likewise was at that meeting. And he has a special expertise now for helping us navigate the comp plan, having been on the planning commission as long as he has, having already spent many, many, many hours reviewing the comp plan as part of the planning commission. He is qual, he is, I think he is by far the most qualified for the breadth of subjects that we come in contact with, and for the importance of the subjects that we'll see in our immediacy.
To me. The first comment I would make is that, and I've said this before, all of these candidates are strong. In walking and talking with candidates, I had the disconcerting feeling, in each of those conversations I was having, that at the time of the conversation, I'm thinking, wow, this person rises above the others. And it was a sense that each of you's been so articulate, and in digging down a little bit into what you had to say, I was even more impressed with you. Why did I pick the two candidates I picked? I think this is shades of gray in terms of qualifications. And I think that's a great thing. I'm going to be perfectly happy to serve with whoever we pick. And I would be perfectly happy to have served with the folks who were at one vote and out of the running at this point. So from my perspective, we can't lose. And that's a great thing. Great thing for the council, great thing for the community. Beyond that, though, I won't add any more than what you have all said. You've been particularly eloquent about all of the candidates, and I don't think I can add anything to that. With that, we'll come to another round of voting. So at this point, we're trying to get from four candidates to two. You again get two votes. So have at it.
Second choice, Marshall. Me, first choice, Wendy Wyker. Second choice, Joel Wachs. Councilmember Bertland, first choice, Joel Wachs. Second choice, Wendy Wyker. Councilmember Wong, first choice, Terry Potmeyer. Second choice, Joel Wachs. Deputy Mayor Grous, first choice, Terry Potmeyer. Second choice, Wendy Wyker.
Can you go through it just one more time?
Yep. Yeah, let's make, yeah, let's not do, not do this wrong. That would be bad form, for sure. Councilmember Ciro, first choice, Wendy Walk, Joel Wachs. Second choice, Steve Marshall. Deputy Mayor Grous, first choice, Terry Potmeyer. Second choice, Wendy Wyker. Councilmember Wong, first choice, Terry Potmeyer. Second choice, Joel Wachs. Councilmember Bertland, first choice, Joel Wachs. Second choice, Wendy Wyker. And myself, first choice, Wendy Wyker. Second choice, Joel Wachs. I'm having trouble with the W names.
I have seven for Joel Wachs. I have five for Wendy Wyker. Four for Terry Potmeyer. And one for Steve Marshall.
Really, that's not what I have.
Let's, let's double-check it, then.
Please, double-check it?
Yeah.
Okay. I did twice about seven.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it one more time. Mike, you're going to be keeping count here, too.
Yeah, I am.
Okay. So for me, Wendy and Joel. Wendy's first, Joel's second.
Right.
For Debbie, Joel's first, Wendy's second.
Right.
For Benson, Terry is first, Joel is second.
Right.
For Dan, Terry is first, Wendy is second.
Right.
And for you, Joel is first, and Steve is second.
Right.
Six. Six. Six for Joel, Terry four, Steve one, Wendy four.
Ally, agreed?
I agree.
Okay.
Can you read that back? Just the total count.
Sure. Joel, Joel Wachs is six, Terry Potmeyer four, Wendy Wyker four, Steve Marshall one.
So now we have three, and rather than going to two, and it's good, important that you found that, because you changed the, changed the outcome. So by the procedure that I had proposed and that we're following, a tie allows those who are in the tie to proceed. So we go to what we're, I guess we still have to try and get past this round to get to a final round, which is just a single vote. So what we do now is, again, top two, to try and get to, and, and Steve is off, so it's Terry, Joel, and Wendy. All right? Two. Still two. We're on round two until we bust down to just two people. You guys were, did that?
Did two.
Did two? Okay. I'll just point out, Mike, as the Steve Marshall shifting to something else, you get to be kingmaker here for the moment. Assuming everyone else stayed where they were. I assume, and, and don't know for sure. Or, yeah, there you go. All right. Debbie, first for Joel, second for Wendy. Benson, first for Terry. second for Wendy. Benson, first for Terry, second for Joel. Dan, first for Terry, second for Wendy. Me, first for Wendy, second for Joel. Mike, first for Joel, second for Terry.
I have Joel with six votes, Terry Potmeyer with five votes, and Wendy Wyker with four votes.
Others who are keeping track agree? Okay, so we are now down to two candidates, Terry and Joel. And at this point, it's just a single vote on these folks. Okay? All right. Dan says Terry. Debbie, Joel. Benson, Terry. Mike, Joel. Me, Joel.
Joel with three, Terry Potmeyer with two.
Congratulations, Joel. Mike, you agree with that? Well, I don't know what to say at this point, other than, again, thank you very much to the 10 of you who are sort of going, oh, shoot, that didn't work out right now, because you put in a lot of effort, and it's got to be a little frustrating to end up here and not have advanced. So there is an election this year, there are council seats, in fact, five of them that will be up for election, that's quite unusual. There are three school board seats that'll be open. There are going to be plenty of chances to, we have five because Tana's seat is the person who's taking, Joel, who's now taking the seat, only would normally have been in it for three years to the next election, but because of this, is only in it for one year. So the sad news for Joel is, now that he's gotten through this, he has to run again this year, and assuming he makes it, he has to run again in two years. So he's in for some elections. Any other comments now?
Can we break for five minutes? I'd like to just give a personal thanks to many of the candidates who are here and many of the other people. I think a five-minute break would be great.
Certainly do that. Anything else before we break, though? Okay, well, with that, let's take a recess to, let's take it to 8:05. We'll take a 10-minute recess. On Ira's advice, he's sworn himself in, or Ally has sworn him in, and he is now an official council member. With no further ado, welcome. We expect you to weigh in on this next agenda bill with full knowledge of what's going on.
Thank you. What will Joel do?
All right, we move to Agenda Bill 5033, Epska-Pisarn Interlocal Agreement. I see Steve Heitman, Fire Chief here. I hope you're going to take it away for us.
What we're here to discuss tonight is Public Safety Emergency Radio Network, otherwise known as Pisarn, and it's an interlocal agreement that will establish one radio entity for the county. Currently, there are four of those entities listed up there. Epska, which we are a part of, is made up of the cities of Mercer Island, Kirkland, Bellevue, Redmond, and Issaquah, as noted by the asterisk. Three of those cities have already voted on this ILA. The other entities are King County, the City of Seattle, and Valleycom. The reason why we are talking about this is that we're talking about replacing our current radio system, which went into service in 1997. So it's approaching 20 years old. It's a 20-year-old system that it has 30-year-old technology. So as you can imagine, we're running into some problems. Currently, it's serving about 16,000 radios between the four entities, and it's utilized by first responders, the school districts, first responders being police and fire, utilities, transportation providers, hospitals, and other government agencies. Again, because it's this old, that system is having difficulty handling the amount of data that we actually require, especially during large events. Also, what's happening is that the vendor, who is Motorola, is telling us that come 2018, they will no longer service this system, and spare parts won't be available for it as well. And so that's why we're moving forward to work on this replacement at this time. What the new system will offer is, it's going to be one radio entity. It's going to require a countywide ballot measure, which is why we're signing this interlocal now, so that we can get this on the county ballot by April and put that out to the voters. It's going to take five to six years to complete this system, to build it, with the migration from that current system estimated in 2019. The estimated cost for this system is $225 million, which includes the sites, the equipment, the labor, sales tax, and interest on the bonds. What I have found since I submitted this to you is also they're requiring a 20% contingency fund with this, upon recommendation from the experts that they had to help design the system. So as I said, they're going to put this on the ballot in April. The good news is, is that the current rates will remain stable and/or drop slightly with this move, since we're going to have one entity. What this is going to do is it's going to give us greater interoperability. We're going to have one system, we'll have more interdependence. What happens right now is that there are multiple sites, multiple systems, but we utilize all of those systems anyway. So you could be an Epska member, but you're using Seattle sites. And so sometimes what happens is that a site goes down, and then there's the big question, well, who owns the site? Who has to fix it? How's that going to impact us, even though it's not our site? We can't put any pressure to get that fixed. So this will help smooth out a lot of those issues. The way they're going to pay for this is through a levied lid lift, and that's what they're proposing on the ballot, which they're estimating will be about six and a half to seven cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And so what we're asking tonight is for you to authorize the city manager to sign this interlocal agreement.
Okay, questions for?
And I might just add a couple things, and you might remember this from one of my city manager reports, I think it was about a month or two months ago, where I previewed this issue coming before you. You're going to actually, this year, be asked to approve two interlocal agreements related to this emergency radio network. This is the first. This one's called the, what's been referenced as the implementation interlocal agreement. So this agreement is just an agreement by us to jointly participate in the county's purchase and installation of the new system. The other interlocal agreement, and the county has made very clear, Fred Jarrett has been pretty much the face of the county on this issue, and they've made very clear, unless they get all of the cities in Epska issue, and they've made very clear, unless they get all of the cities in EPSCA to agree to this ILA, they are not going to be in a position to put this on the ballot in April. So that's kind of the push that...
Maybe 100%?
Yes, yes. And as you've seen, they're almost there, if they're going to participate. I think, was it only Bellevue right now?
Bellevue, and Bellevue has it going to their council next week.
Yeah, so the other, Kirkland, Issaquah, Redmond are approving it, or have approved it. But, so this is the first ILA. The second ILA that is still being discussed with the attorneys and with the various cities and parties involved is called an Entity ILA, which would create a brand-new legal separate entity to own and operate the whole system on, but essentially taking the Seattle, King County, EPSCA, and Valleycom systems and integrating it into one new legal entity that would run the region-wide system. Because of the technology that's developed and the interoperability that's necessary, and all the mutual aid agreements, it's been determined that that makes the most sense moving forward. But there's a lot of detail still being worked out on that agreement about how to create this one new entity, how will all the parties be represented, and how decisions be made. So you'll be seeing that later in the year.
Okay, questions, Benson?
You know, I guess, I know we've had this comment about the interlocal agreements before. I mean, so do we have any possibility of input as far as possible changes, or is this sort of, you're shaking your head. And I guess, is there a way we can get these interlocal agreements in advance before we actually have to take action?
Can I just tell you that our Assistant City Attorney was attending the meetings with regard to these? So this was the, there was city attorneys and Assistant City Attorneys and attendants that came up with this. So this was a little different than simply King County giving us one of their, what I view as their bad interlocal agreements. I think this was something where cities with their vested interest in it, I shouldn't use the word vested, with their interest in it, were heard and had a great deal of discussion with regard to this. I think it's a good agreement compared to some I've brought to you from King County.
And so this entity, this other ILA, will get a chance to look at it in advance, maybe, before we have to approve it?
The city will, in terms of, the legal department will have legal representation there, talking about what the different pieces shall be. You, as the council, will see it in basically its final format.
Unless possibly the council wanted to see it as Councilmember Long is suggesting?
Yeah, I guess if we have a chance, it'd be nice to look at it before we actually have to take action to approve. That's all.
We could do that. I don't, yeah, we could do that if you wanted to give some guidance as to what you'd like to see in it.
What realistically that would mean is having council members participating as...
Yeah, I want to be careful. I'm, yeah, I'm happy to provide it early to council members, but I just want to caution, every other party in this, in this mix has legal counsel representing them. Some of them have multiple attorneys on this. I just want to be careful that we don't insert on behalf of our city, and if other cities did it as well, the number of parties that are trying to negotiate a contract, it could, it could be a challenge. I just want to, I don't want to overpromise that if you had comments that it would necessarily...
Be brought in.
Put us in a position to negotiate something new. But we're welcome to show you an early draft. That's fine.
Dan?
Yeah, I would be most, more interested in just understanding what the business terms of the next deal are, because that is something that's going to bind us for years to come, much like NORCOM. So if before we, before our staff just presents us with the final agreement, it would really be helpful if you would come to us. I mean, I don't know who's doing the business negotiations, whether that's the lawyers, or Noel, whether you're going to do it, or Steve, or who's doing the...
It's the Joint Board.
Well, but, no, the Joint Board is just, there's just four people who are, they're not negotiating the business terms of, you know, what, I mean, what comes down to is the decision, how much money do you have to put in every year and to keep this thing operating, and how is that decided, and stuff like that.
Yeah, on behalf of the EPSCA cities, it's generally the city managers and their fire chief will be the negotiators.
Which is fine.
So that's, that's a good request. We can do that.
If at some point you can just come to us and tell you, tell us where you're heading, so...
Sure.
So we don't have any heartburn about...
Right now, as Steve, as the chief pointed out, we, the analysis we have right now, which mainly Kirkland has helped put together, shows that the current rates we pay for radios will either stay the same or drop slightly. That's, that's the current projection, but we can, we'll share with you the business deal as that flushes out.
I'm sorry, can you explain a little bit about the rates? Because what I understand this, in reading this, is it's capital that we're talking about right 100, right now, the 225 million?
Yeah, I'm sorry, right now, we currently pay a rate, is it, it's per radio.
So the city pays a rate, it's not a taxpayer rate?
No, it's a city rate to have a radio that runs on this, on this EPSCA system. And that's, that's our participation in EPSCA is based on how many radios we have in our use.
And what's that dollar amount roughly?
Steve, do you happen to recall that?
I don't have it right off the...
I'll get that for you. I don't remember.
What, I can add one small other piece of information. I had lunch with mayors of Redmond, Issaquah, and Kirkland today, and asked them about their assessment of this PESERN agreement, and they all gave it a hearty endorsement. So their cities either had signed it already, or were on the verge of it, and felt that it had been really thoroughly vetted, so.
What about, what about Bellevue, which is kind of at a step with Seattle sometimes? Why, is, is truly the reason why Bellevue hasn't signed this is just their meeting, or is there a underlying something or the other buried in here that Bellevue doesn't like?
When I posed that question to Bellevue, I was told that at that time they were vetting it, because they felt that there wasn't enough language around. If there were cost overruns, who was actually going to cover that? In reading through the ILA myself, I thought that there was language that did handle that. I talked to their fire chief today, and they have agreed with that, which is why it's going to their council next week. So the cost overruns covered by the county, and that was, that was the only thing that was holding them up.
Have some more questions, Mr. Mayor?
Well, go ahead.
So, we're discovering on this contract that one of the reasons why we're having to do this contract is because the prior contract Motorola isn't providing maintenance or parts. So, two questions. Does this go out to bid, or have we already identified Motorola as the vendor?
Unfortunately, Motorola's pretty much the only vendor.
It did go out to bid. I think there were two, two proposals in response, Motorola's and another provider, and the other provider wasn't, as I recall, wasn't deemed adequate to provide the full scope of facilities required for this system.
So did the bid include language that would guarantee maintenance support and parts, or...
For the new system?
For the new system.
I believe it's similar to the last one, but again, this system is only going to be designed to be about 20 years, and that all comes down to technology. The technology is moving that quickly that they're estimating this system will be 20 years.
The levy for the last ESPERN, or the last time we did this, is that levy, has that levy expired, or are taxpayers still paying on that levy?
To the best of my know, I don't know 100%. Katie, you may know on this. I believe that that was paid off. I know that this next levy is only going nine years, and so I would assume that the other levy probably went something similar. So this will be paid off before the halfway point on that system.
Good, because that's a pet peeve of mine, that we have new levies that are relative to the baseline, not on top of the old levy. A couple other questions I have is on page nine, paragraph 1.2.4. Why does it call out confidential information? This might be for Katie. Why does it call out confidential information? Does that supersede the open records?
If, if there's technical information that Motorola says is proprietary information, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily have to be shared. It just depends. That's, that's just a real high-level answer.
And it's allowed, it, that's provided for in the Public Disclosure Act.
Right.
So this, this is just codifying in the contract what the Public Disclosure Act already says.
So it's nothing...
No, it's not, you know, it can't create any new exceptions.
So it's really redundant and not necessary?
Well, as a contractual matter... But what I think this contract talks about is how people will mark information that they say is confidential under that provision, so that it's clear to the parties. That's, I think, why that's in the contract.
Okay. On page 14, 4.4.1. A. I don't understand that. What it is, the Joint Board action can amend this agreement, including any exhibits. I mean, we're approving it, so how do they get the authority to amend it?
Because you've already put into place the board, who will act on behalf of the entities. And if, as they move along, we often, when we draft these sorts of agreements, we try to put in provisions that if you see something isn't working, rather than trying to take it back to all of the jurisdictions, that we allow the board itself to amend it. You also ultimately are going to create, just like we have the NORCOM board, you're going to create its own, an EPSCA board. You create this new entity as well, so it allows that flexibility.
Is the council comfortable with that?
I think there's some good checks and balances in there.
Yeah, Mike, do you want to take a break for a second, and let Benson, Kevin?
You know, I read in the agreement that all decisions by the Joint Board are to be by unanimous consent. I was interested in the operations at EPSCA, since we're a member of that, or actions by EPSCA? Is that by unanimous consent, or is that majority? What's the role of Mercer Island on that, other than being a member of EPSCA?
I have to ask our representative, because I haven't, I haven't read EPSCA, and I didn't read it in preparation for this. I couldn't remember that one, off the top of my head. Do you know, Noel?
Yeah, it's by majority vote.
Okay.
Depending on the type of decision, I think there's certain financial decisions that take everyone, everyone's unanimous consent. There are decisions about dissolution that would take everyone's consent. So there are some special things called out that take more than majority.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mike, do you have another?
Second.
Okay. Looking for a motion to move this.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the Public Safety Emergency Radio Network Implementation Period Interlocal Cooperation Agreement.
That's a bit of a mouthful, isn't it? Cut him off at the knees. Go ahead, Mike. All right, discussion. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We are done with regular business. We're going to move to other business, council member absences. I'm hoping we can excuse our council member who is attending granddaughter's birth, or grandchild's birth.
I'm very excited to suggest that we excuse Councilmember Brom for this momentous occasion.
It's her second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Any absences upcoming of which we should be aware? I've already alerted you to one I will have in February. Anything else? Joel, let you check your calendar later, and we'll figure out where you are.
You can have that be absent for the first year.
Planning schedule. Noel?
Yes, thank you. So as you all know, a planning session will be this coming Friday, Saturday, and maybe Sunday if we need it as well. You'll be getting the materials for that tonight. We've got a binder for each of you. The other thing I'll point out is on February 23rd, you see that there's a second reading there for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T, as some of you know already, has withdrawn their application for the cell tower and the small cell facilities, so that will be coming off. We don't know yet if and when they'll reapply. We imagine they probably will, or some other provider will probably want to also explore small cell facilities. So that's something we'll be probably dealing with, but, but not for at least till sometime later in the year, if not even later. And then the other thing is, the, the staff and I are in the process now, and it's, it'll be informed also by your planning session, but of thinking through our work plans for the year to help flesh out the planning schedule some more. So when you see this in, at the meeting after the planning session, you'll, it'll start to fill out with, with more items at future meetings. Yes?
I would like to call out specifically that I'd like to see on the agenda, and ideally for February 2nd, a review or presentation of the community outreach program that would address parking, transportation, town center development. So not per se what the strategy is, but the public engagement framework and process that we'll be pursuing. I know we're going to talk about it this weekend, but I think we need to get that out in front of the public very, very soon.
Okay, well, let me just throw this out. It's kind of what I was seeing. I think it coincides with what you're suggesting. So we, as you know, at the planning session, we're going to be, we'll have some discussion of parking. On January 29th, we've got a public open house planned, and that's, advertising for that is out for the public to come and weigh in on the parking study that you'll be seeing this weekend. That'll give the public the opportunity to weigh in on those different options. One of the things we'll be asking you at the planning session is, as we go into this public session, what are the type of questions that you and a council want to be sure we get public input on? So that'll be the beginning of a place for you to weigh in to some degree on public outreach. Then what I thought we probably would be in a position to do is, on the February 2nd meeting, come back, talk to you about what we learned at the open house, talk about next steps, talk about what other public outreach council would like us to explore. And then, and then in terms of a decision process on, on a parking option, we'll talk more about what that might look like.
I think that the framework that I'm talking about extends beyond parking. I'd say that there's, you know, multiple components. We've discussed this. I shared an email and sort of a thought paper. And, and I think what we need to do is to architect what the community outreach is, not only for the parking, but also how it is that we'll be engaging with the community regarding town center. We know that there's an intense amount of interest there, as well as, I think, an update, if not engagement, in terms of some of the great work I know that's been going on with Metro and different options and negotiations we have. All these issues are intertwined in some way. Can we address them all at a single event, or all of them even at multiple smaller events? Perhaps not. But to me, what I'm looking for is a framework that covers those three big boulders, providing multiple opportunities for individuals and various organizations to participate. And I'd like to have that published, so that people can see points along the way. I would also encourage us to be looking at when and where, and how we include the Design Commission and Planning Commission in there as well, be it through their own regularly scheduled events and/or the extent to which we specifically invite them and bring them into these other events. Because it is clear that it's, it's, it's not just city council. There's a lot of moving parts, and I think the sooner we have a framework and start to have a good structure for bringing that input in, the better off we'll be, and the better outcome we'll have.
All right, sounds like we just rolled into the next weekend. But yeah, you're intending to have time on the calendar at February 2nd. I think we're going to have to figure out at the planning session what the content of that really is.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Although you're...
Yes, because town center...
There's an enthusiasm for it, which I think is shared by others in the council, but we really won't figure it out here tonight. We're going to block time for it tonight.
Yeah, and so...
We need to plan for a plan.
We need to plan for a plan. And the, the other thing that's, on, on Friday, we have both parking and town center as agenda items, and so both of those include public participation discussion. So I think the planning session will let us then spring into the February 2nd meeting and see where we go.
Okay. Anything else for the planning schedule right now? All right. Board appointments? We have none, although the one thing I guess I was remiss in saying to our audience, and I think this is correct, I think we still have openings on the Arts Council, don't we? So if any of our candidates still listening wanted to hop into public service immediately with another board or council, they could, they could sign up for the Arts Council today.
We have a lively board.
So, there are opportunities, folks. Councilmember reports. Benson?
I'll just, actually, it's been referenced before, but this past Wednesday, four of us, Councilmember Cero, and Brom and I, attended the SOS meeting, and it was a lively discussion of about 100, over 120 people. But, you know, we heard, and this dovetails into what we're talking about as far as some sort of community outreach, and how to coordinate public outreach. But there was a lot of discussion regarding concerns and frustrations that people seem to have regard, with respect to the town center development process, and the visioning that we're undergoing right now, plus concerns raised about the bus intercept and what have you. But I guess my takeaway was that we have a lot, a lot of people who are, want to be engaged, and I think it's important for us to develop ways to interact with the public and to get their viewpoints and, and opinions. And so I'm encouraged that we are looking at different ways of doing that. And so just encourage the people who are involved in SOS to basically stay engaged and continue to talk with us. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I was there as well, and I have to say that, you know, there were definitely topics that were center of gravity. There were a diverse set of opinions, even within that group, which I also thought was very helpful, and I think drove deeper perspective and understanding as well. It was distinctly uncomfortable at moments, and I take that as a good. You know, there's a lot of people who say, are you truly learning and stretching if you are not occasionally, or at least occasionally uncomfortable? So again, I appreciate there was a great degree of respect and consideration. I do think that there is tremendous benefit to be gained from the diverse set of opinions around these core set of issues, and I... core set of issues, and I truly do believe that this council is committed and will continue to be committed to, to creating that transparent and inclusive environment that will produce great outcomes.
Dan?
I was not there because I was instead at the Sound Cities PIC committee meeting, and it's nothing of, of great moment going on in, in Sound Cities at the moment. The, the one thing that is, that we may want to discuss during the planning session is the, that there's a request to take monies, well, right now we have a hotel and motel tax in, in King County, and that money is being used to pay off the, the old Kingdom bonds.
They're still paying off the Kingdom?
We're still paying off Kingdom bonds, eh, bonds, and so that, we, those will be paid off by 2021. Under the law, once those are paid off, then a certain percentage of the monies goes for the arts, and a certain percentage goes for affordable housing. And what the, what it looks like the consensus is right now is to, because of the desperate need for additional affordable housing already, the thinking seems to be that they want to bond those future revenues already in order to pay for affordable housing now. From a fiscal standpoint, I find that very troubling. From a human services standpoint, I fully understand it, but it's something that I will, as a, as a representative of Mercer Island, have to vote on at the next PIC meeting in the middle of February, so we can maybe put it on the parking lot to talk about at the planning session, and, and what we want to, if we want to take a position on that.
Maybe a pre-paper, some sort of paper that we can read up on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll circulate something.
Yeah, you could send it to us.
Sure. Mike?
Yeah, while I was at that SOS Save Our Suburbans meeting, really found it fascinating, and a great example of grassroots led by Tom Acker, which seemed very capable, I was very impressed that with minimum support, he corralled, you know, 125 people, and had a very orderly discussion, and there were different opinions, but in general, I'm going to kind of, in general, I thought they were consistent on their frustration with the direction of, of, or the outcome, if you will, of where we are with development density in the CBD, outside the CBD. And boy, I did not feel uncomfortable. I mean, I felt like, these are my people. I was, it was, I felt very, it was, it was a breath of fresh air, listening to what those folks were saying, and I wish them all the luck in affecting the change that I heard there. As, as far as public outreach, I, we've got to be careful with the public outreach. These folks don't just want public outreach, they want change. And, and don't substitute multiple meetings, multiple pamphlets, multiple emails with change.
Anything else?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, do I have, I was disappointed, I shared that with you, Debbie, that I didn't, that I don't have the ETA legislative agenda, interestingly enough. I think it's been about two weeks. So I will scratch and crawl and become an irritant and try to find out where that thing is, but I find it interesting that I don't have it.
Yeah, because I, I thought that it was sitting back with the legislative group, and was probably presented on the Friday, I couldn't attend.
No, we approved it, it's been approved. The, the ETA approved it.
Did they approve it last Friday? I'm sorry for the...
Yes, last, last, no, I think it's been two Fridays ago.
Yeah, at the meeting I couldn't attend, because the edits were provided in December.
Yeah.
So it was approved, so there should be official version then. Okay, thanks.
So, I'll let you know as soon as I get it. It, it was a good one.
Joel, you got anything? All right, back to me. We've, I can't remember exactly when this all fits together, but I believe we had our bus, replacement bus service meeting since our last council meeting, analyzing results of the survey, which was well responded to by bus riders. These are, I'm talking 202, 205 bus riders into Seattle. We, I think, have nailed down a route and are trying to, with, in conjunction with Metro, trying to figure out timing of, of that service, and there will be a, a meeting in, in advance of the study session, or the, the planning session, and then some conversation about this at the planning session. So good progress is being made there.
So can I get the number, the 204 and 205 numbers? How many, is it 204 and 205 that we lost?
202, 205 are the ones that are going to Seattle, that we're trying to recreate some of that service.
Okay, I'd like to know how many Mercer Islanders use that service that we lost? And you can, if you can bring that to the planning session.
We have, we have the ridership numbers from Metro, which are available. I mean, it doesn't break you down by where they live, but...
Ridership numbers would be a start, so if somebody can send that my way.
Yeah, I sent it to you beforehand, but we'll resend it.
Thank you.
I should mention one other thing. On the library issue, the, the new director is starting work on Monday, and Kirsten is, is trying to arrange a meeting with him sometime in the, in the near future to start work on implementing the city council's request, which was accepted by the King County Board of Trustees. So that, as you will recall, that envisioned establishing a process in conjunction with the, with KCLS that would provide a, a means for getting public input into the renovation process.
I'd like the council and staff not to lose, there are two issues. There's the King County, which I appreciate Dan's working on, there's also the ballot issue, which is with the AG, as you know, and I haven't put it on my ticker file, when that's supposed to come back, or when that's supposed to be decided. Have you heard anything on that, or when is it?
I haven't heard anything on it. As soon as I receive anything, I will absolutely report to the council.
Can you give me an estimate of when?
I have no idea. That, that, that's one of the things that we talked to council about with regard to that, because they're going to do a formal decision on it. So I think that what I'd heard was at least six months, and, and I think it's been a little bit longer than that, but they, they, I can, I can probably try and ask, but...
They didn't, they wouldn't give us a timeline at the beginning, so we never said it'll be due, it'll, it'll be...
It's weird, they only seem to issue like less than 10 of these opinions a year. It's not a hot, hot ticket item. So it's, because I was looking, I was actually curious like you were, and I went into the AG's website, and if you look back year after year, it's like eight or nine of these opinions get issued every year.
So, I mean, that is a citizen do-out that we have. Should the council or Noel send an official note saying, you know, we're still interested in this?
Well, the request came from Tana, so Tana would have to, if you recall, Tana was the one who made the, as a legislator, made the formal request. So you can see if she'll put the reminder in, but it's really not in our hands.
Well, I mean, I mean, does the council want to ask Tana to do that?
Let's see, let's see how far we can get with...
Yeah, let's, let's, let's...
I'll check in with Tana, I have to check in with her.
Let's, let's start there.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we have completed other business, we're going to go to executive session. Help me out, Katie, we're breaking these into parts and going to each one separately? Is that...
Correct, we're going to go, the first part will be with regard to litigation, so...
Okay, so I should read this number one?
Correct.
Topic, okay. So we are entering executive session to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation, or potential litigation to which the agency is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency pursuant to, pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1I for approximately 30 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.